At 7 o'clock, Chair sees a quorum, calls me into order, I'll take off my muffle, so that we can get going. First, we'll start with a roll call of members. Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman World.
They're still coming in, just to let you know. The public's just now coming in.
Okay.
I'll let you, one second, I'll let you know when they're in. And the lobby is empty.
Okay, great, thank you. I think I see everyone on my screen now. So, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman World.
Here.
Councilman Miller. Councilman Baum.
Howdy.
Councilwoman Austin.
President.
Councilman Woschick.
Yes.
All right, I will make a note for the record, Councilman Miller was on the line. Is he still showing there, Nathan?
He is, it appears he might be having some kind of difficulty, it's bouncing back like he may be losing connection.
All right then, we'll give him a second to reconnect. While we do this, if everyone could please join with me as we do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which is
Yes.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. World.
All right, we are gonna give a couple minutes here to see if Nathan can work with Councilman Miller to iron out some of his technical issues to make sure he is available for the meeting. We had him connected and it seems that he might have been kicked off, so we'll take a brief recess here as we wait for him to get connected. Thank everyone for joining us tonight, appreciate everyone taking time out of the night to be with us so that we could continue to work through the people's business. I will take this opportunity though, to remind everyone that is on to speak on an agenda item or wants to speak on a non-agenda item, please make sure that you use the chat feature to send a message to Nathan so that he can have you queued up and ready to go for the different agenda items, or if it is to speak on a non-agenda item, so that when that part of the agenda comes up, we can make sure to recognize you on the video chat. All right, while Nathan and Eric continue to work through that, there are some agenda items that we can work through that Councilman Miller was already been, has already reviewed. So why don't we start with Mason from Reedy Financial. If you could please give us, oh there he is, connecting to AutoWise, see that down there at the bottom. All right, and Councilman Miller has joined us now, we have him, he's good to go. Nathan, when you get a chance, please unmute his microphone. There we are.
Hi guys.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
We're all working through technical difficulties to make sure we can keep it going. So, Mr. Sumner, please let the record reflect that Councilman Miller has joined the meeting and we are all in attendance. As I was saying, let's move on to Mason with Reedy Financial to give us the Reedy Financial update.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Today, I will be going over the Whitestown Investment Management Policy Report, the Liquidity and Reserve Policy Report, and the Debt Management Policy Report. All of these policies we implemented to help the town with their S&amp;P rating. The investment policy and the liquidity and reserve policies are something that are presented to the council annually, and the debt policy is something that's presented to the council quarterly. And this is something the S&amp;P likes to see to make sure the council is up to date on all the financial dealings of the town. Just helps build us better credit and helps the town get better interest rates whenever we go out for financings. So, I don't know if you guys have this in front of you or not, I did send it out a few weeks ago, but I will start with the Investment Management Policy. So, the three things that we have to go over with this once a year is the status of the portfolio of investments that the town has, a benchmark of performance against various benchmarks, which are US Treasuries, and then a listing of all the transactions that occurred for the past year. So, all of this report is for 2019 data. The town doesn't have any investments other than your bond and interest accounts and your debt service reserve accounts for your wastewater and water bonds, and all of these are held at Regions. Regions just puts all of your money into basically a money market account for municipalities. So, very low yields as of right now, it's like a .1% interest rate that you're getting on those monies in that money market fund. Over the past year, the funds got 1.3%, as we know, interest rates have fallen since then, but the past year, 1.3% is very good compared to what we're getting now. Compared to US Treasuries, those are all extremely low now. The one-year Treasury is .16, so at the .1 we're getting right now, it's less than that. And then finally, just the transactions are just all cash balances that Regions gets for the BNI accounts are held in this money market fund. That is it for the Investment Management Policy. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Questions for Mason from Council. All right, Mason, please move on.
Perfect, I will do the liquidity and reserve next. We track this for the waterworks, for the wastewater, and then for property tax-funded funds. So, for the water utility, we're looking at the days of operating expense that they have on hand, and the water utility currently has 187 days worth of operations in cash on hand. The requirement for our policy report is 60 days, and it's a preferred 90 days, so we're well exceeding even our preferred. Sewer is the same and even better, it's required to have 60 days, we prefer to have at least 90 days, and we have 248 days of expenses on hand. And then for the General Fund and other property tax funds, the General Fund currently has 185 days in cash reserve on hand, and all other property tax funds combined have 93. This is down considerably this for 2019, partially due to an issue from, we found from the county auditor's office, where the Ants and South Tiff area over-collected about $500,000.
I think Mason froze, and that is not a dramatic pause. All right, as we wait for Mason to refresh and reconnect, we will table that agenda item to come back to finish up his presentations on some other financial updates. And I would pivot then to department reports. Any questions for the department heads on their reports? Seeing no questions for the department heads, Nathan, did we have anyone from the public who wished to speak on a non-agenda item?
I've not received any messages currently.
Okay.
We did have some through email, so if they, that said that they were interested, but I've not received anything, so just as a reminder, if they are wanting to, they need to message host, dash Nathan Messer at the top, but I've not received any messages through the meeting.
All right. Before we get to the consent agenda, I did want to take a moment, make a statement, and if y'all bear with me, as you know, I normally talk from the hip, but I did want to make sure that I had my phrasing the way I wanted it, so I'm gonna read my statement real quick. "Over the past weeks, our country has been going through some very difficult times. Recent events have brought to the forefront of discussion in communities around the country a multitude of issues. Let me be clear, racism has no place in our neighborhoods, community, state, or country. We need to come together in these times to redress wrongs and ensure we are doing everything we can to support each other. I have directed the town manager to put together a committee of town employees to review our ordinances, our employee handbook, and other procedures. This review is to ensure that they are equal for all regardless of race. They will vet these documents to eradicate any hint of racism or prejudice, both implicit and explicit. I've also directed each public safety department to do with their respective governing bodies and employees. These reviews will be required to be handed over to the town council by December with any and all record evidence that will come out of these reviews. We have worked to make Whitestown a welcoming place for all residents. My goal is to continue that work. Next month, we will have a resolution before us that will formalize the process, but I didn't want to wait before we take action, and so I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of what we were doing tonight." With that, I would like to move to the, on to the agenda, I do not see that...
President Baum.
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Say thank you for those, for those efforts, I think that's really important for the town, and if you don't mind, I might, I might say a few words also.
Please, go ahead.
It sort of echoes what you were saying. You know, as an elected official of this town, I firmly believe that it's of the utmost importance for us to immediately ramp up the town's diversity and anti-racism efforts, which I believe ties in well with what you were talking about. You know, we must take responsibility to be the change that is needed to ensure that Whitestown remains inclusive to all and discriminates against no one. You know, we, we started working on that back in 2015 or 16 when we passed the Human Rights Ordinance, and we have to continue that. You know, I'm personally deeply saddened by the senseless death of George Floyd and the many others who have lost their lives because of their race. It's, it's very sad. And I just want to say that I personally oppose all forms of racism and discrimination, and I think we must, you know, as a council, use our positions as elected leaders to support those affected by systemic racism. And I would ask that everyone else do the same, not, not just our town's elected leaders. You know, there's an urgent need for action, and we must actively work to dismantle racist and discriminatory policies, procedures, and ordinance that exist in the town. We must ensure that all of our policies, procedures, and ordinance build and support racial equity, and that's why I just want to say thank you for, for your efforts on leading on this issue.
Thank you. Before we move on to anyone else from the council, wish to say anything?
I think Congresswoman Austin is trying to speak. Nathan, if you can unmute her.
He just promoted her to Congresswoman.
I was gonna say.
Did I? I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you both for your statements and, and as well, Clinton, your leadership on this. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't eight months ago that we were celebrating and acknowledging the foundation of Whitestown by Albert S. White, an abolitionist. We are proud of that history and proud of the work that he did long before all of this bubbled up to now. And I think that it's, it's in us to continue that work that he started, and, and I appreciate you taking these steps to do that. I'm proud of how Whitestown has come forward. I think is a great time now for us to listen and to help continue to move us forward, and I'm looking forward to what we can be once we work through many of these things and we learn more as a group on how we can eliminate racism. And I appreciate everything you guys have started and will continue to carry this along.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll echo what Alba said. I was at the rally, you know, protest on Saturday. Chief Anderson was there and did a wonderful job representing the police force in his comments. I was very encouraged by the unity that was shown there, and very proud of the residents of Whitestown. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with doing self-examination, and I appreciate you leading the way on this.
Thank you, Rob. I just want to reiterate that this is not a last step. This, this is one of the steps we've already made with the Council. Councilman Miller, the Human Rights ordinances, and it cannot stop here. We must continue to improve and keep moving forward, and that's what I want to make sure for the rest of this year and for our years to come.
Yes, I absolutely agree with that, President Baum. You know, this is a first step, but you know, we, we absolutely can't just put stuff down on paper, you know, we have, we have to take action in the, in the near future.
Agreed, agreed. I do see a couple of messages here in the chat to relate to everyone else. Mason is not going to be able to finish his presentation. Columbus apparently has some issues, so I hope, although he has joined us again, Mason, you might try again, you won't wait till next month. All right, Mason wants to give another try, so we'll go back to presentations, and I do see that we have one person from the public that has requested to speak on non-agenda items, so we will go to that after Mason finishes his presentation. Mason?
Yeah, sorry about that. I have satellite internet, so the windstorm knocked me out for a second. Where was I when I got cut off? Can anyone tell me about where?
Extra money, tax funds, we had 93 days. The Ants and Tiff had over-collected, I believe, were your, was your last statement.
Okay. So, we had a lot of extra money get spent out of the property tax funds last year, including missing out on some money because the Ants and South Tiff over-collected. There's also an extraordinary amount of professional fees paid to, in regards to pursuing an embezzlement case. So, there's just a lot of taxes fees paid out, and even with, even with all of that happening, the town was in such good financial standing that you're still able to stay above that 90 days. We're planning on surplusing again, so this was just a really bad one-off year where a lot of things piled up, and even still, the town stayed above their goal, so that was great. Does anyone have any questions about the Liquidity and Reserve Policy Report?
No questions, but I would like to make a statement. As we look at that and we talk about the number of days we have, especially the near 200 days of expenses that we have in the General Fund, it goes with the town's prepared to weather whatever storm is coming and the revenue shortfalls as COVID-19's financial and economic impacts continue to be fanned. As we see how that's going to impact our local revenues, we are well situated, able to handle those things without a drop of anything to, to our residents, so I feel very confident in our financial position to get through whatever may come.
Yes, I agree. And then finally, we have the Debt Management Report, which is a quarterly report that just goes over your debt capacity and all of your outstanding bonds and debts. So currently, the town's AV is 636,150,0790. That gives you a debt capacity, a direct debt capacity of just over 4.2 million, and with your outstanding two bonds that are affected, or that are affecting this capacity, you still have the remaining 2.9 million of direct debt that you can issue. We just issued some SRF loans, these are the only new loans or bonds that we've had since my last time reporting this, but total outstanding bonds are just over 44 million. Total outstanding leases are just over 36 million. And then we have, the report I sent out shows two bond anticipation notes, but we actually only have one. The Public Safety Lit Ban is currently the only one still outstanding. Those new SRF bonds that we just issued paid off the wastewater bond anticipation note that's still shown there. There's one, and short-term bond anticipation notes still outstanding. We're currently in the process and planning on closing around the end of this month, some water and wastewater refunding bonds, where we'll be consolidating some, for each utility, three wastewater bonds into one new refunding bond with a much lower rate, and then three water bonds combined into one at a much lower rate. So, both utilities will be seeing some good savings at the end of this month. And that's all of that report, if anyone has any questions on any of the three.
All right. Thank you, Mason. Any questions for Mason? And that's just a reminder for council members, the refunding were bonds that we approved, work on at the end of last year, but Reedy waited to find the best interest rate, and now we have gotten to a point where we're gonna have a very good interest rate to refund at, so that the savings will be realized, and we're very happy with what we're about to see for the taxpayer and the reduction of interest paid. So, thank you very much for that, Mason.
Yes, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, we've already gone over department reports, and then I've got one individual signed up to speak on a non-agenda item. Nathan, if you please unmute their microphone, please, if you could, sir, your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Toby Thomas, and I'm in Eagles, I'm here, 7810 Gray Eagle Drive. And thank you for having me today, for having the meeting, and I really appreciate you letting me say what I have to say. I really appreciate the comments from Council President Baum earlier when you were saying that racism has no place in and around our neighborhoods. These past couple weeks have been very, very rough for our nation as a whole. And then Councilwoman Miller, I appreciate what you're saying about ramping up anti-racism efforts. But I would like to take a moment just to respond to some, some comments that, that I'm sure you're all aware of from Councilwoman, Councilman World earlier this week, that were very, very painful for me to read, for my wife and I as well, and they've caused some serious division in an already polarized community. In response to a question about systemic racism, he responded with comments about social welfare policies that encourage single-parent families, that trap parents who fill in schools without the options of vouchers to go to better schools, and telling kids that they can't succeed without money from another race, or telling kids that it's okay to have lower test scores because of their race. And while I do understand that we're all, the, the, the joy of being in America is that we all have the freedom to express our own opinions the way we see fit, and that's a few freedom that I would never take for granted. I do feel that as an elected official, elected official, that these comments do undercut a lot of the things, a lot of the, the things that you are said, that you're said you're working on as far as ramping up anti-racism efforts. But I would like to go over just, and I only have a few minutes, but just talk about a few of these points and why I believe that they're incorrect. First is the welfare, and so she said social welfare policies encourage single-family parents, and I would have, I'm thinking that when you're talking about systemic racism, you're talking about racism against black people, and as a black person, I feel like I have a unique advantage, point, to talk about how these things have affected me personally. I would like to note that white families tend to use welfare systems at a higher rate than black families, and that families that, black families, for instance, are torn apart. I don't have a lot of time to go through everything, but key points are, black families in tense, in general, are torn apart by higher incarceration rates, black or white, black versus white for the same offenses. And it seems like that statement would say that a person would not want to stay with someone because of welfare, which would be reducing an entire culture to very, very small ideas of that culture. A second point, talking about school vouchers, those, the, the effect of school vouchers, they end up causing monies being taken from schools that are needed, and they only benefit specific people that are taken out of those schools, out of those public schools to go to private schools. And studies have shown that a percentage of black students that are able to benefit from school vouchers have dropped significantly down to only about 12%, and most vouchers are now going to middle-class and upper-class white families. There's several things that aren't addressed by talking about school vouchers there, but there are other times to talk about those things. Also, his next point about telling kids that they can't succeed without money from another race, I feel like that point completely ignores the entirety of the history of America, because this entire country was built on the backs of forced labor from an entire race, which has continued to be almost completely and systemically shut out of the rewards of that labor. So, when we say that we're actually taking money from one race for another, what exactly are we doing there? That, those, that statement just doesn't vibe, and I do encourage all of you as well to review the history of redlining and poll taxes, and also Jim Crow, and their very real legacies that have affected us today. And finally, the, the final point that he made about telling kids that it's okay to have lower test scores because of their race, I feel like that's very pejorative, because there is no parent in America that would tell their children that it's okay to underachieve. My wife, many of you know her, she's a very successful doctor, in spite of all the obstacles that she's faced as a black woman. I myself, I'm a very successful airline pilot, I'm a captain on an Airbus, and I've made it to that point despite specific and very real obstacles that were placed in my, in front of me because of my race. I could go into those, but we'd be here all night and all day if I could, if I start listing everything that has happened that are not just, not just anecdotal evidence, but actual things that have happened to me that people have said to me because of my race. But that's not really the focus of today. But finally, I do want to end this by stating that those comments, I do believe that, and I don't know you personally, Councilman World, but I do believe that those comments are racist, and I feel that you owe this community an apology for what you said, and you said that you're encouraged self-exam, you're encouraged by self-examination, that was said earlier, and I just want to know what you're doing to help bring this community together. It's already a very polarized time, and I really, once again, I appreciate you guys letting me get that off my chest and explain to you what my thoughts are. I'm hearing the alarm going off, so I think I've covered my time there.
I don't know where that's coming from.
Thank you, thank you for sharing your comments with us, I appreciate hearing from members of the community and from taking your time. I know that all of us having busy days and all of our schedules and things going on, even in this COVID world, taking your time to be here, I thoroughly appreciate that and your insights for what you've had to go through, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I have a moment?
Yes.
This is, uh, Ms. Councilman World. Mr. Thomas, I appreciate you coming on and providing your insightful comments. I wanted to just give a reply based on what has occurred in the past 24 hours. You were absolutely correct in what I responded to and what my comments were, and I'll say my reply left room for others to misinterpret the two meaning, and so I wanted to make those very clear. Number one, I believe it's in the best interest for a child to be raised by a two-person household. That does not diminish the hard work single moms and dads in our community, or in case where single parents had no choice in the matter. They love their children and they work hard for them. I believe the use of school vouchers that allow parents to choose the best form of education for their child is warranted. Last year, my family participated in homeschool, private school, and public school. I have four kids, and each one flourished in the learning environment they were placed in. Vouchers were not used for my kids to go to private school, but I do believe they should be available for those that need it. And I believe there are things with affirmative action that we should look at and, and review. These issues, as you said, Mr. Thomas, and I think you agree, require more discussion, research, and, and talk than can be offered via a social media comment. I understand not everyone agrees with my three points, and productive dialogue to find understanding is truly what makes us a community. I fully acknowledge, fully acknowledge how my comments could be misunderstood, and I regret the resulting turmoil that has impacted my town, my town council members, the town staff, my friends, and my family. And again, I want to be crystal clear, racism has no place in this country or the town of Whitestown. I mourn with those who have felt the evil effects, and I support policies to seek to end it. And, and I know I'm reading that, because I was, I wanted to make sure I got it correct, and, and Mr. Thomas, I extend my, my hand as a neighbor to be willing to sit down and, and talk more, because we can't do it justice over Facebook, and we can't do it justice over a three-minute conversation. So, I appreciate you coming in, and I hope we can. So I appreciate you coming in, and I hope we can talk soon.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to the item six on our agenda, the approval of the consent agenda. As that stands today, it would be the approval of the minutes from the 5/13/2020 meeting. Claims, May 2020 expenses, town. May 2020 revenues, town. The May utility claims, water operating, wastewater operating. Item C, consider expenditure exceeding $5,000, not exceed $12,000 for purchase of utility lawnmower. And then item D, consider approval of contract with Butler, Fermin, and Seifer Incorporated for design of walking trail on Whitestown Parkway in front of the Maple Grove commercial not to exceed $34,600, and I would offer a motion to approve the consent agenda as just read.
Second, Susan Austin.
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion from the council on the approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
That motion is adopted. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, I see no unfinished business, and that then brings us to item A of new business, which is to hold a public hearing for the Walter Payton Power Equipment Tax Abatement Deduction Application. So it is currently 7:34, and I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone, Nathan, that signed up to speak on this agenda item?
Not at this time.
Is there anyone that wants to message Nathan real quick, because they want to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public?
Don't move. Susan Austin.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the discussion on closing the public hearing. Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is now closed at 7:35. Moving on to item B, Consider Resolution for Walter Payton Power Equipment Tax Abatement Deduction Application, Resolution Number 2020-08. And it, title reads, Resolution Number 2020-08, A Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, waiving certain requirements within, with respect to an application for deduction from assessed valuation for Walter Payton LLC. Do I have a motion on the resolution? Eric Miller moves to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
All right, resolution's adopted. Next, we have a public hearing on additional appropriation. So it is 7:36, and I will open the public hearing on the additional appropriation. This is Additional Appropriation Ordinance Number 2020-15. This is an increase appropriation for capital outlays, part in the Compact Fees Fund of In the Community Crossings Grant Fund, capital outlays increase of 323,247. And then the Fire Fund, Personal Services, 907,255. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on the additional appropriation?
I've had no requests at this time.
All right. Thank you. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. The public hearing is now closed at 7:37 PM. All right. Moving on, that takes us to item D, the Approval of Additional Appropriation Ordinance, Ordinance Number 24-15. Again, Additional Appropriation Ordinance Number 2020-15, the Compact Fees Fund, Capital Outlays Increase 144,684. The Community Crossings Grant Fund, Capital Outlays Increase of 323,247. Fire Fund, Personal Services Increase 927,655. Real quick, Steve?
Yes, you have to suspend the rules if you want to adopt it.
Thank you, Steve. I would make a motion, we suspend the rules to have second reading and adoption of ordinance 2020-15 this evening.
Second.
I'm going to say Susan got the second there. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
All right, second reading, Additional Appropriation Ordinance Number 2020-15. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-15.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second as a further discussion on the additional appropriation ordinance. All right, hearing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to our next agenda item, Consider an Ordinance Approving the Updated UDO Ordinance 2020-17. It is 2020-17, an ordinance concerning a replacement Unified Development Ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana. We've had this before us a couple of times. Brittany, could you remind us of the Plan Commission and the process that they took there?
This has been presented to the Plan Commission. Plan Commission has reviewed this, as well as Plan Commission reviewing it. Myself, as well as Chris Ham and Brian Stump, who are also here, helped put the UDO together. We did have a committee with Baggy going over the UDO, making some changes and working with developers. Right now, this is before you, this will have to have an amendment to the UDO. When this was given a positive recommendation by the Plan Commission, it was given while we still had the town court. Given recently, the town court has been abolished by town council, we will have to make an amendment to some of the text and language within the UDO before it could get final approval.
All right. So with that, Mr. Unger, would it make sense for us to hold, or are you looking for us to adopt the ordinance tonight so we can at least get most of the policies in place, and then we'll do a trailer next month for the court?
No, what, we have actually set this up to include the amendment within this ordinance. And because we're adopting a replacement UDO, it's, it's kind of awkward in the statute, and it's a lot cleaner for us to adopt it today. Otherwise, we have to notice it up and hold a public hearing, or notice up, special notice in the newspaper for the adoption of this if we, if we weren't to act on it tonight. So we set it up with you, with the council adopting it with an amendment, and what that triggers is it goes back to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission has 45 days to act on it. If they fail to act within 45 days, it becomes effective, or if they approve those amendments within 45 days, it becomes effective. So we've set up on the face of the ordinance and approval to go back to the Plan Commission, and I think that would be the plan, would be for Brittany to take this back before the Plan Commission at their next meeting, have them approve it, and then they can sign off on it, and it's clear on the face that everybody approved this, this basic amendment.
All right, thank you, Steve, for the clarification, so that we all are well-informed on what's happening. With that, as we know, most of the time when ordinance has come to us from the Plan Commission being reasoned, they are a one-read event. Steve, is this a one-read or is this a two-read?
One, one-read still on this.
All right. So with that, ordinance 2020-17, an ordinance concerning a replacement Unified Development Ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana. I would offer a motion that we adopt ordinance 2020-17 as presented.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion from the council on the replacement UDO? All right, seeing none, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. We've now got to our last item on new business, to consider an ordinance approving a text amendment to the Golf Club of Indiana PUD, ordinance 2020-18. Or is 2020-18, an ordinance amending the text of the Golf Club of Indiana PUD ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana? All right, Nathan, had anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item?
Matt Price is here to represent, but there are no public that wish to speak out on the item.
Mr. Price, would you like to speak on behalf of the petitioner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here tonight with representatives of the two home builders that are anxious to get started with this project, Dave Compton from Polte, who you may be able to see on your screen, and Keith, Keith Lash from Lennar. As you mentioned, this is a text amendment, and I can touch upon just a few highlights relating to the amendment, because these two builders have delved into the project and have sought to update the PUD through these amendments, and let me summarize those just briefly. One is that the original PUD set forth a requirement for a connecting street between Whitestown Parkway and County Road 750, and this was done before recent updates to the town's thoroughfare plan, and I think perhaps without the full knowledge of the extent of floodplain throughout this development. And so we're seeking to eliminate that requirement and really focus more on maintaining what is really, I think, more, more attractive feature to the town, which is the pedestrian connectivity throughout the development, and really making it a more, more suitable to the nature of this walkable community with substantial green space. The other, the other revisions, let me just summarize, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, are really what I would call modernizing and updating the PUD. I can give you an example for, with regard to building practices. We've updated this so that the ordinance requires that the homes be built in accordance with the 2020 Indiana Building Code and amendments to it, had a reference to really some former and somewhat outdated building practices before, just something that needed to be brought current. The PUD permitted single-family homes, not single-family, single-story homes before, but the drafting was somewhat skewed so that it seemed to be drafted primarily around two-story homes. And so in a few places, we have just made clear how the rules or standards would apply to a single-story structure. And so I can give you a quick example of that. There's a requirement for certain model homes to be built, and we've, for example, added that a model home can be either a two-story or a single-story. The idea being that the consumer base and those looking for a new home in this attractive community may want to choose from one of the varieties of a two-story home or a single story, single-story home, and we want to have a model that shows multiple options. And so we've made that update. And then I would say just in a more categorical way, and I'll close with this, we've tried to emphasize, along with the diversity of, of home styles, diversity of architectural treatments as well as building materials. So for example, we've codified the various roof designs that are required, building materials that are required in certain instances, window treatments, things of that nature, and I think really brought them current and up to the modern, more modern standards that the town would expect and that these two premier home builders offer their customers. And so, as I mentioned, they're anxious to get started. We're, we're all three of us are available to answer any questions that you have, and we appreciate working with staff through this process. We did receive a 7-0 favorable recommendation during our Plan Commission hearing last month. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Price. Any questions for Mr. Price? Brittany, anything to add from the Plan Commission perspective?
No.
All right. Any questions for Brittany? All right, seeing none. Ordinance 2020-18, an ordinance amending the text of the Golf Club of Indiana PUD ordinance of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana. I would offer a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-18.
Don't move.
I've got a motion, Susan's the second, for the discussion. All right, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. That brings us to the end of the new business agenda, and I see no other business and other business or anything. Is there anything from the council they wish to bring before the meeting, before we adjourn? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there further discussion? I just want to thank everyone for joining us tonight and for being online, those that participated, those that were just viewers. We do appreciate everyone taking advantage of this opportunity so that we can still be connected, even in this time where we're supposed to be distant. So with that, Mr. Sumner, please call the roll.
Councilman Whorle?
Yes.
Councilman Miller?
Yes.
Councilman Baum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Austin?
Yes.
Councilman Wyszek?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Have a great evening.